Making sure our microphones work. All right then. Hello, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting for Monday, October 24th. Sarah, could you please do a roll call for us?
Absolutely. Councilmember Biskins.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Mershen.
Here.
Councilmember Nowitzki.
Here.
Mayor Marquez Simila.
Here. Thank you, Sarah. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively addresses changing citizen and community needs in a fiscally responsible and customer-friendly manner. Now we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Those who are able, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is our approval of the agenda. Does the council have any questions or changes that they'd like to see?
No.
No.
All right then. I have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nowitzki and a second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have our Proclamations, Presentations, Recognition, Announcements, and Guesses. First is a proclamation for Todd Estram Day. Todd Estram is the owner of Tasty Pizza and Hangar Forty-Five.
Forty-Five, he's a former owner.
Former owner. Former owner. All right. Former owner, but longstanding citizen who has really helped our community for decades and decades. And so he is receiving this proclamation today. For Todd Estram Day, which was October 19th. Whereas Tasty Pizza has operated continually as a business serving Columbia Heights since 1963, when Duane Estram joined founder Louis Sigourney. And whereas Tasty Pizza has provided the surrounding community with a neighborhood gathering place. And whereas Todd Estram continued in the tradition of his father Duane "Fat Man" Estram, continuing Tasty Pizza's support for the city of Columbia Heights, area schools, local organizations, fundraising and events throughout its six decades. And whereas we recognize all that Tasty Pizza, Todd Estram and the Estram family have given to the city and the many organizations in Columbia Heights. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Amada Marquez Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, do hereby proclaim October 19th, 2022, to be Todd Estram Day in the city of Columbia Heights, County of Anoka, State of Minnesota, USA. And we will mail a copy of this to the family and to him. We can do a little round of applause for his day. And it's nice to have, this was given to him, I believe, this week.
Yes.
By our Councilmember Jacobs. And I do think it's important to have it at our council meetings, so that way there's a record of it in our meeting minutes and on the video as well. Next, we have our Native American Heritage Month proclamation. And for this proclamation, I've invited Jack Israelson, who is a new youth commission member here at the city, and he's going to read this proclamation for us. Welcome, Jack.
Thank you. Day of American Heritage Month, November 2022. Whereas there is a deep, rich Native American history in the state of Minnesota going back 10,000 years. Minnesota is home to 11 tribal nations and a resilient and robust urban Native American community. Along with the Dakota people and the Anishinaabe people, the Ho'k'unk' Cheyang, Otto, Iowa, Hidatsa, Arikara, Ayin'akri, Blackfeet, Esseny Boing, and the Sac and Fox tribes also acknowledge Minnesota as important to their tribal histories. And whereas members and descendants of these tribes around the United States and First Nations of Canada also reside in the state of Minnesota, including our city of Columbia Heights. And whereas Native American contributions and values have shaped the social, political, environmental, and economic fabric of the state while also enhancing freedom, prosperity, and cultural diversity. And whereas the novel coronavirus has affected us all, but is of particular concern to the tribal communities. Historically, Native Americans have faced many foreign diseases, excuse me, diseases, and turned to their cultural knowledge as a result during difficult times, which holds true today during their battle against COVID-19. Tribes and Native American organizations are actively working to protect elders, tribal communities, and families from the spread of COVID-19. And whereas Minnesota joins other states across the nation in celebrating Native American Heritage Month, honoring the unique heritage of this continent's first people and reaffirming the commitment to respect each tribe's sovereignty and cultural identity. Now there is a resolve that I, Amada Marquez Simila, Mayor of Columbia Heights, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month and November 25th, 2022, as Native American Heritage Day in the city of Columbia Heights, County of Anoka, State of Minnesota, United States of America. And here to receive this proclamation is our state senator, Mary Kunisch.
Nice job, Jack.
Well, I'm Petu Washte, Matake Yapi, I'm Petu Kinne, Shante Washte. Mary Kunisch, Senator Imaki Yapi, Ma Lakota. I am your state senator, and I am a proud descendant of the Standing Rock Lakota Nation. And so on behalf of the diverse number of members of indigenous people across the state, across this community, I am very proud to accept this. And I want to say Chi Migwich, Wopila Tanca, Pi Amia, Pinigigi, to all of you for recognizing the indigenous people and the land that we walk on, which were the original Dakota and then the Anishinaabe people. So wopila.
Thank you, Migwich. Thank you, Mary. Next is an introduction of Eliza Pope, who is our new youth librarian. Here to present her is our library director, Renee Doherty.
Mayor, members of council, I'm so excited to introduce Eliza Pope, our not-so-new youth services librarian. Eliza earned her Master of Library and Information Science at the University of Alabama. And she brings work experience from the Tuscaloosa and the St. Louis Public Libraries. Most recently, she was a teen specialist and the manager of the Crete Tech Labs at the St. Paul Public Library System. And she's going to share a little bit today about summer reading at the library.
Thank you.
Okay, so as Renee said, my name is Eliza Pope, and I have really enjoyed getting to know the families of Columbia Heights and serving the families and youth here. So let me get this presenting. I have used PowerPoint in my life.
I'm sure you have many times. More than twice, I'm sure.
Let's see. Am I almost there? Oh, there it is. Okay, perfect. Thank you. This will be a super short slideshow, just pictures. So first off, I wanted to tell you about the summer reading program that happened this summer. This is a way we keep youth engaged in reading during their out-of-school time. We had 302. Oh, sure. So let me start over.
Sometimes you have to side to the stand to the side.
The side.
Yeah.
How's that? Is that better? No? Okay, I'll lean in. So I'm going to tell you about summer reading program, which is our Summer Adventures Program, and it engages youth in reading during their out-of-school time. We had 302 youth register this summer, and they read 1,889 hours. They get a free book just for registering that they get to keep and grow their own home library. We also saw the return of the Volantene Program, which is our teen volunteer program. We had six teen volunteers this summer, and they volunteered 95 hours assisting with youth programs, creating storytime props, serving lunches, signing kids up for the summer reading program, creating art, which, there's two examples, The Mermaid and The Affirmation Station for the library, and also did general tasks like dusting, shelving, organizing, and things like that. They were a great help, and we really appreciated their time and talents. We also hosted a variety of art programs with our 21st Century Grant. And these encouraged youth to learn new skills and get creative with a variety of mediums. So just a few of the things that the youth learned to do, and there's pictures of these, is to sculpt clay into clay garden tiles. They learned the history of sumiye ink and techniques used in sumiye ink. They learned color theory and how to mix acrylic paints, and they learned needle felting techniques to create mushrooms from wool roving. And we had a number of parents and grandparents say that their children really look forward every week to learning something new. The final thing I want to share is a custom screen printing class that we did for teens this year. It was led by Columbia Heights resident and MCAD professor Natasha Pestich. This was a four-part series where teens learned how to sketch an image that translated to the screen printing medium, the importance of screen printing and conveying messages, how to pull a print, and how to transfer a print to the screen. Each teen created something that was totally unique to them. We had somebody create a Boba T character. One teen created matching pickleball shirts for her and her dad, and another teen created an homage to her favorite Taylor Swift album. And these are many pictures of the teens pulling their prints. They really enjoyed the class and requested that we offer it again next year. So that's all from me. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to sharing more youth updates with you in the future.
Thank you, Eliza. I very much would look forward to having more of those. It's really, really interesting. Thank you. Next, we have Captain Johnston is going to present the Citizens Justice Academy update, which is starting in a couple weeks.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me tonight. I just want to talk a little bit about our Citizens Justice Academy, and this is actually an idea that was born, I think, back in July when Mayor Marquez and Paul Young from the Anoka County Attorney's Office talked about what it might look like to hold an academy of this, similar to our citizens academies that we've done in the past, but this one's going to have a broader focus. It's going to have prosecutors, hopefully some judicial representatives, corrections, and kind of the whole criminal justice system from beginning to end and kind of explaining how that works. So it's five sessions. It's free to attend. It starts November 3rd, and it's, I think, Thursday nights is what we're doing. For a couple hours a night, there's going to be meal provided, and we encourage people that are interested to sign up through the police department by contacting Officer Monberg or calling the police department directly.
But skipping Thanksgiving.
Skipping Thanksgiving. That is correct. Yeah, we're going to hold off on that one. All right?
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted as part of the consent agenda by one motion. Items removed from the consent agenda approval will be taken up as the next order of business.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like to have pulled?
No.
Okay. Then item number one is approval of the October 3rd city council work session minutes. Item two is approval of the October 10th city council meeting minutes. Item three is approval of an agreement for 37th Avenue Reconstruction Project with the Sioux Line Railroad, CP Rail, for the right-of-entry and construction agreement, and then authorizing the Director of Public Works to sign those agreements. Item four is adoption of Resolution 2022-97, accepting the feasibility report for 37th Avenue and 37th Place Street Reconstruction and Multi-Use Trail, and also ordering the public improvements hearing for City Projects 2110 and 2306. Item five is approval of the license agenda in your packet. Item six is approval of the rental occupancy licenses in your packet. And item seven is a review of the bills totaling $1,282,813.33.
Thank you, Kelly. Are there any questions?
No.
All right, then I have a motion to accept the agenda or to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mershen and a second by Councilmember Biskins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings. That takes us to our items for consideration. Item number eight, refuse service contract with Walters and Hallstar. Kevin Hanson is going to take us through this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a contract for providing a new carrier for our trash and recycling services only. This is a service that had been being provided by Waste Management. We were coming to the conclusion of a five-year contract with Waste Management in 2022 and elected to go to an RFP, or Request for Proposals, process. To initiate that, we first updated our solid waste operating policy that we refer to as our swap, and that was done by the council in February of this last year. Subsequently, we prepared requests for proposals and sent those out to numerous firms as the requests for proposals were set up where an individual or a company could provide a response on individual services or a grouping of all of the services that the city provides. Those responses were received in June of this past year, and we had Walters Recycling and Refuse come in to talk to the council regarding their proposal. From that discussion, it was directed by the council to repair a contract with Walters. About four weeks after that discussion with the council, we were informed by Walters that they could not honor their proposal, and they withdrew. So we were somewhat back to square one. On that basis, we then reached out specifically to the other bidders. In this case, it was only Waste Management that had provided us with a bid, but we also reached out to other carriers in the industry. The largest of those would be Republic. And we had discussions with the other carriers, but they basically told us that the issue that they're seeing in the industry right now is how we pick up our alleys. So the alleys do require a specific type of packer truck or garbage truck to pick those up, simply because the can locations are really kind of different in each and every alley. They're all over the place. So that you do need manual moving of those carts to get them in and get them emptied. We can't really use effectively any of the sidearm or any of the auto loaders. And that's an issue for all of the carriers. We heard that directly from Republic and from Waste Management, that they were interested in providing service, just not in our alleys. And it's really not possible for us to change in many locations going from alley service to street-side service, just due to how a lot of the homes, the lay of the land of a lot of the homes, that we couldn't get carts out there. So we started looking at what are our other options. During this time, we did have proposals come in for other services. So right now Yard Waste is under a separate contract that is with Better Futures. And then we also had compost service, cart pickup on street side through the company called Hallstar. We did reach out to Hallstar because they do operate with rear-load packer or garbage trucks if they'd be interested in performing or doing our alleys. The result of that conversation is that Walters came back and provided a joint proposal to the city to provide those services. So the way that the contract would be arranged is that Walters would pick up all street-side service in the community, and that Hallstar is picking up all alley service in the community. That contract is before you tonight. And again, I just wanted to emphasize that this contract only is for recycling and for trash, just for those two services. Because in addition to that, the city does pick up yard waste, and we do pick up bulky materials. Those are now under separate contracts, at least for 2023. So the contract before you tonight represents that. It does refer to the swap for how things or how our service will be provided here in the community. The last thing we didn't have from Hallstar, and we didn't have time to really look at, were the fees for providing those services. So I did, we got those in on Friday. We did have time to look at those today. And the fees, we knew they were going up, so I just wanted to go through what those are. The combination of fees for both picking up every other week recycling and then also garbage services is going up from the RFP. Can you give me just a moment? 24%. So we knew that we were going to see an increase. And again, largely, this is due to, the main reason why Walters withdrew, they do have a great deal of difficulty hiring CDL drivers. It's just fortunate that within our alleys that Hallstar was already here, and they have that capacity to pick up using the rear-load. Walters, in giving their bid, they also have capacity to pick up our street side, so that will not be an issue for providing that service in the future. The contract before you tonight is a four-year contract, and then it has an option for an additional year, which would result in a five-year contract. The other thing to note in the pricing sheet that's before you tonight is that the tipping fees for waste or for garbage, those are going up about 34%. We had that discussion with the city manager today, and we'll be coming back to the council at a later time for what those impacts are going to be to our current rates to the community. We'll have to sit down with our finance director and just look at those impacts. We did plan in this year's budget for increased service fees, so it is accommodated for in the budget, but the next thing we'd have to do is look at our rates and just to make sure that the rates are supporting the service and that we're not going into the red for that. So, Mayor and members of the council, it's been an interesting year, and a nerve-wracking year, just to make sure that, you know, we're going to have garbage, trash, and recycling service come January 1, but we feel fortunate that we have really a joint effort being led by Walters for that. We have some background with Walters. You know, we did visit their facility, and we feel that their customer service is local, that, you know, everything is being handled through the Blaine office, and they had explained that to you when they came here this past June. So we're looking forward, hopefully, to engaging with them and providing the service and having some good customer service with them. Mayor?
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Questions for Councilmember Biskins?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you and your staff for working really hard to get this done. I know it was a difficult and challenging last few months to get this done, so thank you.
Last month was pretty nerve-wracking. And I would point out Jesse Davies has done a lot of work in contacting folks and getting proposals and feedback from the various companies.
Very good. Thank you.
Just appreciative that Walters.
Councilmember Jacobs?
That came back.
Yes. It's a price increase, but in any case, we knew pricing was going up in the marketplace.
Councilmember Mershen, did you say something?
I just said, thank you very much. Tell Jesse did a great job. You both did fantastic. Now we've got a good, reliable garbage hauler and stuff, so thank you very much.
Right.
Such a relief, talking to, talking to members of the community and knowing that we didn't have anything for a while. I mean, how long, how long were we?
Three months.
Three months.
Having anybody.
Three months of staff being in stress, but then all of us as well with not knowing what was going to happen come the first week of January. So thank you for hustling, and please, yeah, share that with Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item number nine. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. We do need to approve this. I have a motion to approve the wonderful contract.
Move to approve. Go ahead, John. Okay. Move to approve the refuse service contract with Walters/Hallstar and authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract for the same.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mershen and a second by Councilmember Biskins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Biskins. Next is item nine, to amend the 2022 budget for $2,300,000. And here to present this is our fire chief, Charlie Thompson.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm back here with the budget amendment, and I'll do a little recap. If you go back to the October 3rd council work session, I gave my budget presentation along with a capital equipment expenditure and replacement. We talked about past equipment, and then we talked about, moreover, the equipment that we needed to focus on. Specifically, the first one was our first-out aerial truck. I talked about replacement timelines and guidelines that are in NFP documents, and they typically tell us around 20 years, it's time to start looking at replacement. However, it all depends on what type of equipment you have and the maintenance and the type of trouble you're having with it. If you recall, I also gave you some very specific instances of catastrophic failures that we've had with that truck. In fact, two separate times, it just quit operating on fire scenes. So we had to get the ladder stored, get the crew shuttle back to the station, and it was towed back to the station. So we actually did it, we actually towed that truck four times. We still haven't identified the root of that problem, so hence, that's why I brought this up to the city council, and I'll get into some of the other reasons that we discussed. At the October 3rd work session, I also discussed the third-out engine that we have, our engine two currently. It's a 2015, which brings it to 27 years. You're really pushing the envelope on trucks when you get that kind of years on it. Now, compound that with the fact that these trucks, when we purchased our last one, was about eight to 12 months out. Now, when we talked about this at the October 3rd work session, they were 30 to 34 months out. Today, they are now 32 to 38 months out. So we're really getting this spread in terms of when we place the order, how long it takes to get the trucks. This is our new world. We all know that. They're seeing it with public works equipment, some of the other equipment that we have in the city. I think the key element for the council was the fact that November 1st, we're going to incur a price increase. Now, we talked about this when we purchased our last truck. That was maybe 18, 19 months ago. The trucks have gone up about 28% since that time. We're going to see another 6.5% increase November 1st, and I think that's one of the many things that got the council's attention and gave us, the finance director and myself, direction to go back and get these budget amendments put together in the purchase agreement. If we wait till after November 1st, we're going to see another $167,000 increase. This is significant dollars, and I know this equipment is, it's a major fund. It's a major insurance policy, if you will, but this is also vital equipment for the fire department, and we actually need it. Given the, given the six stories that are going up in the multiple-story buildings, that aerial is one of our priorities. So the council gave myself and the finance director direction to go back and analyze amending the 2022 budget to accommodate the purchase and put an award contract together for McQueen, which we've done through the Houston Galveston Area Purchasing Consortium, for an impel pumper and an impel 110-foot aerial platform. We, the finance director and myself, had several conversations about this. We had a bit of a worry in terms of trying to purchase these trucks and getting them delivered too close together. The last thing we want to do is put the burden on the city in another 25 to 30 years of purchasing two huge expenditures in one year. So we did our best to work with the factory to try to spread these at least a year to a year and a half out, and I think we achieved those objectives with the contract that I submitted in the packet. So if we enter in this agreement tonight and the budget gets amended, the aerial will be about a 21 to 24 months. They're going to expedite that, if you will, but that's a two-year period before we receive the aerial. And the engine will be 32 to 38 months out. Moreover, probably 38 months, which gets us a two-year spread between these pieces of apparatus. We both felt was extremely important because, again, I don't want my predecessor dealing with an issue like this. I want them to put together a solid capital purchase plan, and when that year comes up, it's time to purchase that equipment. The funds are there, they're allocated, and they're ready to go. So, Madam Mayor, in a nutshell, we've put together the documents, we've put together the budget amendment. I'm not sure if the finance director has, if he'd like to speak, so I'll let him say his piece.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, members of the council, the chief covered that really pretty well. The only other thing I would point out is that The only other thing I would point out is that this had been, this purchase had been included in the proposed 2023 budget that was published out on the city website in August, and in order to take advantage of this, avoid this price increase in November, this action would be pulling it out of that 2023 budget, putting it into the 2022 budget. So anyone following along the trail of the 2023 budget, that's just a little side piece of information for them about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
At all? We went through this pretty in-depth at the work session, so I feel like our questions were answered.
A lot of questions.
Yeah, I think it's save some money and get this in right away, so. All right then, may I have a motion to waive the reading?
Move to waive the reading of Resolution 2022-96, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs and a second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Now may I have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-96, amending the 2022 budget to appropriate $2,300,000 from the fund balance of government equipment fund 431, and authorize the city manager to enter into the related vehicle purchase agreements with McQueen Emergency Group under the cooperative purchasing contract with the Houston-Galveston area council.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs and a second by Councilmember Immersion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. We have no ordinance resolutions, bid considerations, or new business and reports, but we will go to the city council reports. And I can start. See, in the last couple of weeks, pretty busy, lots going on, and we had wonderful weather to do it in. I set up a display about Poland at the library for Polish Heritage Month for October, attended the Booster Dinner with some other council members were there as well. We had our youth commission meeting last week, and I've joined the MWMO for a project called Art to Change the World, and they remove trash from the Mississippi River, and we're making an art piece, so that will be displayed in a couple of weeks. I'll definitely update the city on that. Toured the personal care facility, open house this past weekend. It's beautiful, new building, just wonderful staff, and we couldn't have a more beautiful space right there next to the Roundabout by Housit. I taught a class on Dia de los Muertos with Heights Next at the library in partnership with the library, and we had a full class. It's our fourth class, and it was so much fun to go through that. Volunteered with the Every Meal Program at Valley View School, attended the fire department open house, spoke at a Minnesota healthcare forum at our own library here, and attended the ribbon cutting at the high school for their brand-new gym that the boosters helped them, or purchased for them. So had a very busy couple of weeks. And does anyone else like to go next? All right, Councilmember Nowitzki?
Thank you. Let's see, pretty busy as well, was at the Booster Dinner. Thank you to the boosters for donating, the floor looks wonderful, and we actually have another chance to see it this week on Wednesday, the volleyball section at 7:00 PM against Minneapolis Henry. And then the Adopt a Highway was held over a couple, what, two weekends ago? Went very well, so thank you to everybody that attended, that helped out. We gathered probably four boxes of hygiene products that was donated to the school, twenty-plus bags from university, and probably a couple thousand pounds in the paper, so we need to pick that up a little bit and get people to bring their shredding in and fill the dumpster, so thanks for everybody that helped out with that. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Immersion?
Okay, the firehouse, the fire department open house, I was at that one, there was a lot of kids, it was a great time, they were having fun. Was at the Booster banquet, that was a good time, a lot of people. And then Todd Estrum's 60th birthday party last Wednesday, it was jam-packed, there was a lot of people that were supporting him and stuff, so it was, that was a nice one. And then the shredding, we did good, well, not really good, but we did okay, it was busy. And the only other thing I have is the Lions Club is having their Halloween bash this Saturday, October 29th, doors open at 6:30, and it should be a good time. First prize is $1,000 for the best costume, second prize is 200, and third prize is 100, so hopefully everybody can come out there, City Knights will be playing, they're a fantastic band, so hopefully everybody shows up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Immersion. Councilmember Bisgins?
It's been busy, nice weather, gorgeous weather, I hope everyone had a chance to enjoy it the last couple of weeks. I attended the Minnesota Climate Adaptation Partnership webinar that they have monthly via Zoom. I want to thank Public Works for adding more ADA corners to our intersections in town. I know we have a long ways to go, but every single one counts, so thank you for doing that. I want to thank our high school for joining us in recycling plastics and bags and wraps, they've joined the organization that we use to recycle those, and it's very exciting. Boosters, I attended the Boosters Awards Dinner, it was a great time. I also attended the high school ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new gym up at the high school. I attended the fire department open house. I also, with other council members, attended the Todd Estrum's birthday bash, huge turnout, huge turnout, it was great to see the support that he had in the community. And I attended the open house to the personal care senior living, a very nice facility, very warm, and it just felt cozy in there, so I was very impressed with their setup that they have there. And that was it, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobs?
I attended the Todd Estrum celebration along with the others, the firehouse open house, the open house at the care facility, participated in the Adopt a Highway, and I didn't hear anybody from Lions mention, or anybody mention Truck or Treat, is that this weekend or am I?
That would be this weekend, yeah.
Yeah, okay, oh, you're, okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to make a quick statement that the past three months have been very impactful to all involved. The time is coming, and it is my intent to return my focus to the tasks and responsibilities that over 4,200 voters elected me to. The mayor has previously stated publicly to the effect that we will not always agree with each other, but it should not prevent us from fulfilling our roles on this council, and it is with that in mind, and my anticipation is for the efforts of this council to be received appropriately on behalf of our residents and not disregarded because of personal prejudice toward me. I thank you.
Next, we have a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council, just a couple of items, just some things coming up. Truck or Treat is the first one, that's the Saturday, October 29th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Housit Park East. Kids can explore fire trucks, snowplows, tow trucks, police cars, military vehicles, and more. Of course, free candy for the kids, they can pick up their bags at the welcome table. And then there's free hot cider and coffee while supplies last, in addition to other activities and games, including face painting and airbrush tattoos. Again, we're offering children, not adults, but children can get a ride to school on a city vehicle, and we have the pet costume contest again, so that's being supported by Healing Hearts Rescue, and that's at 2:30, and the winner receives a free exam from Pet Central this year. Puppet Wagon also, there are shows at 1:30 and 3:00 that day. And finally, November 1st is the deadline for the Art of Columbia Heights City wall calendar submissions, so this is our third annual city calendar, and this one will feature city art. We're looking for paintings, drawings, or graphic designs by either Columbia Heights residents, or of Columbia Heights landmarks, events, or performers. And then photos of art, architecture, performances, artists, and other artistic things in Columbia Heights, and then photos taken within Heights that are particularly artistic by themselves or edited in artistic ways. Those can be emailed to photos@columbiaheightsmn.gov, again, by end of day on November 1st for consideration. The limit is three submissions per person, and there's more information and guidelines at our website, columbiaheightsmn.gov/fotos. So hopefully, people can get all of their photos in. It's great to see those calendars come out, it's always fun to get to flip through and look at everything, so thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next is our community forum. At this time, individuals may address the city council in a respectful manner. Individuals should address their comments to the city council as a whole, not individual members. Speakers that are in person are requested to come to the podium. All speakers need to state their name and connection to Columbia Heights and limit their comments to five minutes. All speakers are also asked to fill out this information, as well as their address, on a form for the council secretary's record. And that's Sarah up in the front here, for those who don't know. Those in attendance virtually on Zoom should send this information in the chat function to the moderator, and make sure to turn on their video and audio when they address the council. The city council will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if needed, request staff to follow up or direct the matter to be added to an upcoming agenda. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items raised at the community forum at the meeting on which they are raised. Sarah, do we have anyone who would like to speak tonight?
Paul Edner would like to address the council.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, city council members, fellow residents, and departed guest Senator Kunesh. Distinguished guests, thank you for this opportunity for me to speak. I'm here today to air my views on the new city hall and apartments construction. Specifically, my foremost concern is the roads. Roadwork has been limited, has been limiting my access to my own home for several months, and road resurfacing has been done in recent years, but the heavy vehicles and construction materials have done great wear and tear on the roads. I'm looking, because I do not know what is in the budget, that the taxpayer does not get another bill for resurfacing roads due to the damage done during the construction. Regarding the parking situation on same issue, I am aware that there is parking for residents at the new, at the new construction, however, most families have more than one car, and when you have guests, additional parking is needed. The increase in parked cars will be similar to the increase in parked trucks during the construction. Central Avenue and the adjacent streets will be overrun with vehicles and at the worst time of year, winter, when there is overnight parking restrictions, as well as additional restrictions due to snow emergencies. My fellow residents of Gould, Peters Place, et cetera, will air their own additional concerns. I thank you for your attention on these matters. Me, which?
Thank you, Paul.
Mark Veronicus would like to address the council.
Thank you.
I heard I can't do videos on here like back in the 90s when we were dealing with alleyways, so I guess I just have to wing it, right? Is there any way you could put up a Google Maps on there of my neighborhood?
No, we'd have to have that ahead of time to sort of plan it, yeah, we don't.
Back in the 90s, when we were dealing with alleys, we'd come in, they had the camera, but anyways, first off, whichever one of you was, I heard about, I was here a couple weeks ago, and I heard somebody was censored, whoever, whatever, that's all done and gone by my standard, I don't care. And the two of you guys that I saw on National Night Out that I emailed about our street issues that he was just talking about, that never got back to me, thank you very much. That being said, I'm here for the same thing that the other guy was, our roads, and I had the guy in charge of Public Works out a month, month and a half ago, and he said that he was going to move, they were going to tar further up on both blocks on Peters and Gould, but they still stopped at the same spot anyways. And then he said, at the bottom of my alleyway, they were going to put no parking right there so that the garbage trucks could get in and out of the alley. They never put signs there, which makes me wonder if on my block, down at the corner, if they're going to actually fix that next year, or if that's just kind of another lie. And so, kind of wondering, you know, I thought I did things right, obviously nothing seemed to work, so here I am. And then where the Heights Theater, the Dairy Queen, and the church are, they got the new entryways going in, but they're not where the old ones were. If you look, the entryway coming into the church, it's literally coming in halfway into their handicap parking spaces. And the people I talked to at the church don't know anything about that. Tom, the owner of the Heights, he wasn't aware of that that was going to be in a different spot beforehand. Nobody knows anything. And then you got the sidewalk for the shiny new construction project, I don't know if you've been there yet or not, but on the one side, it comes down, it's all nice and level, you know, nice level parking spot, and then it drops, and you got the bottom part of the sidewalk that comes up, and there's like a two-foot drop, that they put some velvet ropes up, that, why didn't they just make that like the other side, so, you know, you don't have to walk up and literally turn in, go right in front of the building, and come back and keep going straight up? None of us up there can really understand that, that, oh, it doesn't make any sense. You know, usually a sidewalk's a straight line, it doesn't wrap right in front of a building and then come back up. We don't, we don't really understand, you know? And we've been dealing with it for, that whole thing for a good couple of years, and it's been a, it's been a pleasure, and considering what we went through up there, I can't imagine what the people by Rainbow are going to be dealing with. I really feel, I really feel for them, because I know what we've gone through, and it hasn't been fun. So, I don't know, that's about I got to say. So, yeah, so, like he was saying, though, if down the line, when, you know, because it's not if they're going to come and hit us for a special assessment and say that everything's normal wear and tear on our road, it's when. And when that happens, are we going to be stuck with the bill? Or are they going to, the developer, since they were the ones parking the semi trucks that were on our roads, I mean, literally, they have a sign down at the bottom that's tipped over, right by the Dairy Queen sign, says 15,000-pound weight limit on our road, an average cement truck is 65,000 pounds fully loaded, well, that's definitely over the weight limit. One of the neighbors earlier this year, he called down because literally the curb was sinking in because the cement trucks were parked there when they were putting the foundation in. And they fixed that, but our roads are, both our roads are cracked like crazy, you know? And it's not normal wear and tear that did it.
Well, thank you for coming in to talk, so I will just remind you that we can't really comment on what you're presenting in the community forum, but we have started where the city manager will take any questions that come in, and at the next meeting, there can be information or anything.
Yeah, I mean, I had the guy in charge of Public Works come out and look at it, and he just said that it's normal wear and tear, it's not normal wear and tear, that wasn't there before.
Well, we would like, so the council would like to hear the answers to the questions, and then for the audience and people who watch the videos too, so there'll be a follow-through, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I really appreciate your concern.
Yeah, I took some pictures on my way down, if you want to see them after, I can.
Yeah, I would love to see them after the meeting, but.
That would be awesome.
Well, thank you for sharing that, and.
All right.
Anyone else there?
I don't have the additional form.
All right.
And I don't have anybody online.
All right, would you like to speak? All right, if you can come up and, you'll have to fill in a form for the city clerk.
The papers, except we have. I have somebody who just, information online here. So the forms are there at the door?
No, no.
You need to, if you'd like some form at the door.
Regulate the house.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
So we can use the form at the door. So we need to put it at the door.
Isa Donnelly would like to address the council. Go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for hearing me tonight. Sorry, my lighting is terrible. First, I would like to thank the mayor, as well as council members, Biskins, Nowitzki, and Merson, for your continued professionalism through the last three months. It has been an incredibly trying time, not only for you guys on the city council, but also for those of us in the city. Although the censor has happened, and we've had the meeting, and it seems to be a done deal, those of us who live here in Columbia Heights are still distressed by the fact that there is someone sitting on the city council who has treated members of the city and the community at large with some disdain. And we are all still waiting for her to resign so that the community at large and the people that she hurt can move on, and we can put this distressing time behind us. So I just wanted to be able to voice that, give a little bit of voice to that, because it's not, you know, it's really not over. Not until she resigns. It's not over until Councilmember Jacob resigns. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just remind everyone that we do have to address the whole council, so make sure when you're wording anything that you're just wording it for the whole council to Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, Sarah?
Yes. Kay Meyer would like to address the council.
Thank you.
Sorry, you guys, I don't know your.
That's okay, it's a lot to learn. It's okay. You're welcome.
I am just learning about what's going on with Kechi, from the newsletters, newspapers. And in respect to all of you, I think it's time, I'm going to say, grow up. I am tired of this political climate where people are me, 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 I, I, I. My feelings are hurt. Somebody was naughty to me. I don't know what the situation is, but I think it's time. I'm sure she's asked forgiveness. Move on. Move on. No one here is perfect. We've all made mistakes. We've all said things, maybe in the heat of the moment, whatever it was. There is a God in heaven who you will answer to, and what you do will out to other people will come back on you, whether you believe it or not, I don't care. But grow up and move on. Are you the one that knows Ellison?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can't.
I can't ask a question?
You can't ask direct questions. You have to just have a statement. You cannot call out to anybody in that way.
Okay, I'm assuming my statement is, is you know Ellison? If that is correct, you are the last one to throw stones.
I'm sorry, you cannot, you cannot address one council member.
I'm done. Don't worry about it, I'm done.
Thank you.
I don't have anybody else online, or anybody else who's brought me in.
All right then. Seeing as there's no one else who has any comments to make, then may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Merson and a second by Councilwoman Biskins to close the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.